I'd like to call the special meeting of the Eastline Board of Finance to order. We had our regular meeting was scheduled June 8th. We had to cancel it, and so we scheduled this special meeting for tonight at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is delegations. Delegations is when any member of the public would like to address this board on something that is on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we can move on to the approval of minutes. First, we have the regular meeting of May 11th, 2022. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, concerns?
I'll move to approve the Eastline Board of Finance regular meeting minutes of May 11th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six zero zero.
I was going to abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So you practically don't have to abstain if you believe that the minutes, you know, were, you know, generally done in accordance with the way the meeting works, but if you'd like to abstain, you certainly can.
Make it six zero then.
Next is the minutes of the special meeting of May 24, 2022. Everyone had a chance to review those. It was pretty short.
I'll move to approve the Eastline Board of Finance special meeting minutes of May 24th, 2022.
Second.
Okay. Any discussions, corrections, concerns? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes of May 24th, 2022, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries six zero zero. Thank you. Coming up next is reports. First is the Board of Education.
Kind of moved this over here.
Nothing to present on this.
Okay, well, welcome Jeff. And I just want to say that was a fabulous graduation ceremony the other night.
Well, thank you very much.
Lots of great teachers by the students and faculty, staff members, just really nice.
Appreciated members from the town being there and part of that. It was one of the first things I was going to say was thank you for joining us. It really went great, both our middle school promotion ceremony the night before and then the high school ceremony. Great nights weatherwise, and it was a nice feeling to be, have everybody in attendance and all of our families. So the kids were excited as well and went off and had their, the seniors had their grad party afterwards, and all went well. So we graduated another class, so we're already gearing up for next year, which will be here in no time. So end of the year, yeah, went well. It was a challenging year. We've shared that over the course of the year, but again, we're already looking forward to, you know, the work of the summer as well as our work, you know, for next year and getting everybody back in about 70 days or so. So I think that's roughly the number. I think Board of Selectmen members had been to our last two Board of Education meetings and mentioned the charter revision committee. There's a committee that's being formed. I know our Board of Ed, I just wanted to put it out there as well, that our Board of Ed is hoping to have maybe a Board of Ed member be able to be part of that or somebody from, you know, the district as part of that as well. I'm glad to see that the charter's being taken a look at, and it's time. I think it's been about 10 years or so, and we'd love to be part of that if possible. And that was really, that was really it, just a quick end of the year synopsis of, you know, everything ended up being well or going well. So any questions at all about anything for the end of the year? Okay.
No questions?
All right.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Sherry.
Thank you.
First Selectman.
Kevin Sherry, First Selectmen, 25 Quell Crest Road, Eastline, regarding charter revision. That is one of the things that we anticipate appointing the commission and the charge in August. I've forwarded to the Board of Selectmen the recommendation of the last commission, Charter Committee, what they recommended and why they did or did not do certain things as well as the final draft. So they have that to review to see what was done at the last, at the conclusion of the last charter revision. I didn't send the minutes because that was extremely thick and they, I told them where they can grab ahold of those to look. But, you know, the thing is, the commission has to be between five and 15 members. I think we're looking at nine to 11, but we'll decide that going forward. No more than three can be elected officials. And Ed Morris, Ed O'Connell pointed out that, you know, with these people, you want people who have a background and some familiarity with municipal government and so forth like that, because it's not really a position or a, you know, a platform type of a document. It's how the government of the town runs. So he made a good presentation to the Board of Selectmen last month, and we'll be talking about it more at our July meeting and then moving forward then. The interesting thing is, is you have to have a vote within 16 months of the commission forming, which is why we selected August, because it would be November of next year of the municipal election of next year, which is when the, you know, if it moves forward where the charter revision would be submitted to the voters. You have to have a minimum of 15% of the registered electorate voting it, which is why we did not pick a referendum date for the budget, because those are low numbers. If we got 14.5%, that, all that work and so forth, regardless of what the 14.5 would be, that wouldn't be a valid vote. We know we'll get more than that at a municipal election. And we'll obviously be asking boards and commissions and Board of Ed input, and I appreciate Jeff's comments to us for, like, have someone with an education background on the committee as well. Their input as far as changes, just public hearings going forward and so forth like that, and more, a lot more of that to follow. I'm doing some union negotiations now with the UPU, which is the Town Hall Administrator Staff and the Public Works Staff. We'll be doing firefighters after that. Demolition, which was supposed to start last month up there, must be getting close because they have big, heavy-duty vehicles up to start taking it down. I reached out to a fellow with Department of Transportation, but the engineer that's overseeing the project, but he didn't get back to me today, so I'm hoping that's an indication it'll start soon. Same thing with the garbage at the old driving range. We've, Mr. McGraw has reached out to them, and they're supposed to pick it up this week. It may have been picked up today as I was driving home before I came back. Both times, going up and coming back, I forgot to look to my right and left to see if it was gone. Coyotes and bears, we're getting daily calls, not really complaints, but calls about the coyotes and bears in various parts of the town. We posted something on the Public Safety page and on the town website today for coyotes. And we're going to be talking more about it on July 6th, and we might be trying to arrange this presentation for a question and answer period later on in July regarding that, too. Same thing with bears, because, you know, obviously, if you see a bear, don't, you know, stay away from it. That's an easy, easy one. Same thing with coyotes, they're not, and none of these calls that we've received reporting any aggression or sick, they're just reporting sightings, so. But there's some information on our website and on the Public Safety page as well now. Moving on to some good things, July 2nd, 3rd will be the art show right here by the Lions Club. They'll have food trucks out back. July 16th is the Celebrate Eastline Day for the first time in three years. There'll be fireworks at the end of it, Saturday, July 16th, and that starts at 3:00. This Friday, June 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00 is the Rock and Roll Car Cruise on Main Street. We have an Elvis impersonator coming. We have a Priscilla Presley impersonator coming through the cooperation with Main Street, Atlantic Cinemas and that, so it should be a fun time, you know, just stroll up and down Main Street. I think it'll be a good time to have for everybody. Some ribbon cuttings, Crown Fit, which is right down here, the fitness place right where Malloy's, right in that, Malloy, that dates, a lot of us there, Malloy's Department Store used to be, but that just opened up the other day. And Farmers Market has now started as well, every Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00 on Methodist Street. Good turnout so far. And also in July, starting July 6th, we start the beach concerts at McCook's. And on Friday, the 8th, we'll start the ban shell concerts up at the top of McCook's, and that runs all summer long. Those are usually really well-attended. People enjoy those. And as you drive by 185 Main Street every day, you see changes to it. They're really working hard. They're still hoping for an opening day of July 4th for the bakery. Looking at it, I'm not sure it will happen, but how quick that place is moving, I'm not going to put anything past them. And the last thing is, I put a post out, too, last week. We met with someone regarding the car wash. Someone's in the process of purchasing it to put a new car wash up, much more environmentally sensitive. It's basically a state-of-the-art to where you'll have an app on your phone, your license plate will be there, you drive up, it reads your license plate, tells you how much they have you in account, gate goes up, you go in to eat your car wash. Also, the entrance will move a little bit so you're not opposite the exit from Stop and Shop, and coming back out will be a lot safer, too, so. And as you saw, I put up there saying you could do up to 120 cars a minute, a minute, yes. It's really quick. 120 cars an hour. So that's pretty much everything. And any questions?
Do you have a timeframe when you think the Charter Commission Committee will be set?
We're planning on appointing it with a charge in August.
August.
So we still have about a couple of months. You know, that's the earliest. I mean, we're not going to rush that. We're going to make sure we get the right people. We have much fewer meetings during the summer. People are vacationing a lot, too, but so the latest would be September, but we're hoping for August, so in that timeframe. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Next, Anna Johnson, Director of Finance.
Good evening. So you did have the financial reports in your packets for the month of May, but before going over those, I wanted to report to the board that I have failed to get the June 30th, '21 audit completed at this, at this point in time. The hang-up for me has been that I have struggled to get the capital assets portion of the work completed. At this point, I have finished all of the gathering of the information. I have it inputted into the system. I've created all the reports I need, and now I need to finish by compiling the statements that I need to provide the auditors to audit. I have had a conversation with a representative from the State Office of Policy and Management to discuss this, and so at this point, what I need to do is I need to contact them every week and give them a status update for getting it completed. I'm waiting to get confirmation from the auditors in terms of, okay, if I provide you the information, you know, by this date, when will you be able to come out and, you know, review the work and then work towards, you know, getting the statements compiled?
And so when do you think the capital assets portion of it, how long do you think that?
I want to get that done this week, just to, you know, be done with it. Next week is actually the last week of this fiscal year, and it's, you know, it would just be more than I would want to have to deal with, so I'm, you know, putting the nose to the grindstone and going to work at getting that accomplished by the end of this week.
Well, I can certainly attest the fact that you've been busy with a lot of projects over the past year, and I know there's always a lot going on, and especially supporting our group and the Board of Selectmen group. And I, I know that Mr. Sherry will support giving you whatever help you need to get through this last phase of it, because I think it really is important that we have this all buttoned up before, you know, we move into July and meeting with rating agencies and things like that. So, you know, if, if it's not adding more to your plate, a quick email to me, just giving progress over the next couple of days to see where we are, that would be helpful just to see if we're, if we're going to make it through this week.
Okay.
Do you have, do you want to have any?
The auditors have been out doing field work. Is that on the items not related to the capital asset or?
Yes.
Okay, so all they have to come back is do some field work on the capital asset report?
On that part of the, of the, of the work that I provide to them, yes.
Okay, the auditors, well, if you can at least give Denise a copy, her, notify her of the weekly update with the OPM so we can be made aware, because that's part of our charge. I think we all need to be kept apprised of that.
I will do that.
Any other comments on the audit before we move to the financial statements?
So the one thing with the, with the unassigned fund balance, I did take a look at that and the estimated projections through the end of the year, and I'm still comfortable, confident with that, with that, with that projection, so. And then in terms of budget-wise, I think anything that occurs, we're keeping, you know, we're keeping up with transfers from within the departmental budgets, and I believe we'll be okay through the end of the year.
And we are looking at that 15% again, right? Through the, I know we were rounding, we were truncated before, and now we're, we're...
Well, the report, the report that, you know, the update at the end of, at the end of May was 14.818%, so, I mean, we are, we are very close. I think, you know, a lot of it's going to depend on how our, you know, the expenditure side of it rounds up, because I looked at the revenues and what the projections were to the end of the year, and, I mean, I believe that those projections are pretty, you know, pretty set the way they are.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Anna?
Just on the general fund budget summary, you have, the two dates are usually one year and the current year.
Yes, I didn't change that. My, yes, I see that.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
It's usually the one on the right is the previous year.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on to new business, so most of the items, or all of the items under new business were all things that we had worked on through the budget this year and that had been approved through the town meeting and the Board of Selectmen. So a lot of our actions tonight are to, you know, make sure we've got all of our i's dotted, t's crossed, and everything that we are legally charged to do in regard to these appropriations. So, I don't know, Kevin, would you like to?
These are something we've all just, as we talked about, we go through the budget upon budget, so we've already approved this numerous times already. Now we're just bringing it forward to move it forward. So I, unless there's some specific questions, you know, I'm perfectly...
I think we've all discussed them at length already, so. So first one, under new business, a special appropriations bond resolutions. Your packet.
So be resolved that the resolution entitled Resolution Making Appropriations, an amount of $850,000 for the rehabilitation and improvements to various town roads, town parking lots, and sidewalks, and authorizing the issuance of $850,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof of the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached hereto, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the legal voters at the town, at the town meeting.
So we typically would waive the reading of the rest of the resolution where we fill in the blanks, and a copy of, of the resolution in its entirety is on file in the town clerk's So, the, but we don't have to appropriate, or we don't have to vote on that separately. We just have to vote on the two resolved for the 815, or do we, do we want to do that separately? Okay, all right. So, the, we need a second for that. Second. Does anyone have any discussion? Questions? All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries six zero zero. So then, as part of that, the next piece, John.
Okay, second bond. So be resolved that the resolution entitled Resolution Making Appropriations, aggregating $1,180,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements, and authorizing the issuance of $1,180,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached hereto, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the legal voters at the town, at the town meeting.
All right. Any discussion?
Better question.
Yes.
I have a question about one of the, maybe two of the projects. The first one for $100,000, the high school HVAC air handlers recapitalization. And down to the middle school where it says HVAC air handlers recapitalization.
So those are, both of those really are to take care of recapitalization being, you know, the units themselves have reached a certain stage in their life where either the entire unit may be in need of replacement or major components would need to be replaced. And this is part of what's going to be ongoing, an ongoing project each year. You know, in the past, we've had several projects, not at the middle school, of course, but the high school, where they would do large banks of equipment at any given time for larger amounts of money. And in this case, we're trying, or at least my plan is to do smaller, you know, one at a time, two at a time, potentially spreading that out over time, so we're never in a position in the future where we have major components all failing at the same time. So this would be for two, one or two of the oldest units, depending on their condition. And it's to be determined exactly which ones, you know, we've done, just recently finished the entire inspection and condition assessment of all the equipment by an outside MEP firm, and we're right now trying to prioritize which ones really should be done first based on the risk of them failing. And at the middle school, it's sort of similar case where now we have all the equipment is, it's all 22 years old right now because the building came online at the same time. We've done no recapitalization there. So in this case, we have a number of units where the coil may be ready to go, or one of the problems we really have that we're facing at the middle school is that the refrigerant that's being used there is no longer being manufactured, and the only refrigerant available is what's currently in stock. So what we want to do is get ahead of that stock being depleted by starting to replace coils that maybe aren't exactly at the end of service life, but if they were to break or something, the cost of doing it at that time would be almost prohibitive or would be double the cost because it's unplanned maintenance. Does that answer the questions?
Well, part of it. Maybe it doesn't apply in these two situations, but correct me if I'm wrong, I, when we're going through the American Rescue Plan, I saw that they would pay for certain duck work and HVAC units because of the health issue, if they're not working properly. Now, does that apply here or not?
I didn't, well, I think there's two parts to that question. I think that there was a lot of ARP funding that was sent forth, and of course, that wasn't authorized use for it. I think, at least how I understand it, is that the ARP funding that we received was used for other purposes, and that there isn't additional ARP funding currently available at this time. The state itself has said that it's going to issue, and I'm not sure if this was signed or not in the law, an additional $9 million to bring modern HVAC into schools, but our priority for that is going to be quite low because there are so many schools that have no AC, whereas we already have functional units. So as I understand it, there is no available ARP funding right now for that, for us, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, ours went to educational purposes versus the maintenance.
I'm sorry.
Ours went to educational purposes.
Yep.
Versus the maintenance side of things to the buildings.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So we have a motion.
I have a second.
And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Nope. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Nope. That motion carries six zero zero. So Anna, we have everything we need for those, right? I know this is a complicated setup. Okay. So next, special appropriations, CNRE, annual subsidy, 115,300. Move to approve a special appropriation for the following projects in CNRE Fund 32, which are consistent with the 2022, '23 Capital Improvement Plan. Note, a town meeting is required. And same thing?
Same thing. Basically, this is money set aside so that we build up a fund, so if, something, you know, like for the reval, and so we're ready for the next one, so we don't have to fund it all in one year. Same thing with the townwide project servers, the HVAC replacement, everything there is just, you know, so the funds bill. This should be the last one, I believe, for the Eastline Water for Boat Motors, so.
And again, this was something that had already been
Yes.
...discussed at length in meetings. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other questions or concerns? All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Any abstentions? No. Carries six zero zero.
Move to approve a special appropriation amount of 165,000 to be used as follows. $30,000 for town-wide garage door repair replacement, $30,000 public safety buildings repair and improvements, $85,000 lift jacks for highway maintenance garage, and $20,000 reval plant stem study with the source of funds being the LOSA program and accounts to be established titled with the state project number. These projects are consistent with the 2022, 2023 Capital Improvement Plan. Note, a town meeting is required.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just thought, are all of these town meetings, can we combine all of this into one town meeting?
Oh, yeah, this is all going to be one town meeting.
Okay, good.
You mean you don't want to?
Just checking. Right, any other questions? Go ahead.
Yes, the 30,000 for the public safety buildings repairs and improvements, what, I forget what that entails. Is that the ceiling of the building?
No.
No, it's other... No, it's other things.
Go ahead, yeah.
So when, you know, when we were working on the capital improvement plan, we, we just used, because anything that we use LOSIP funds for needs to be included in the capital improvement plan. So we just used a broad description to really encompass all of our public safety buildings. So that way, in the event that a project comes up during the course of the fiscal year, we would have the resources to access the LOSIP funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter, did you have a question to?
Yeah, I think the plant stem, rebuilding plant stem, that's for the study, not.
Right. The, the actual repair of that will be significantly more, but this is just to get us to that next step.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries 600. Next, item B, special appropriation, emergency management grant, $15,940.
Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $15,940 to account number 01-70-725-224-006 NSCEP equipment to cover the cost of purchasing the above listed equipment for the new EOC in grant allocation 2022-98. Note, a town meeting is required.
I'll second. Any discussion?
This is just, you know, we have to, this is grant money, but we have to allocate it still through the proper channels and all that, and make it available. And the chief gave a very good description of what the funds will be used for.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor of approving the appropriation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? No. Motion carries 600. And last, in new business, is the special appropriation for the 2022, '23 acquisition program, $1,015,647.
I'll make the motion. Revolve that, the resolution entitled Resolution of the Town of East Lime, Connecticut, authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease/purchase agreement and schedules thereto for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing, leasing of certain equipment, a copy of which is attached hereto, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the legal voters of the town at the town meeting. We waive reading the resolution in its entirety. It has been on file with the town clerk.
Second.
Paul, second. Any discussions or questions?
I think it's, I'll spell that one.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. 600.
Just, we'll be scheduling tomorrow, since this is all passed here, we'll be scheduling a special Board of Select meeting probably for Thursday, just to set the date, to set the call for the town meeting, which will be July 6th.
July 6th.
July 6th for the town meeting for everything you pass tonight.
We don't have any old business. Next would be public discussion, where anyone could speak to anything that's under the purview of this board, and I don't see anyone. Board comments? Would any of my fellow board members have any comments or anything that they wanted to share? I think we're good without them. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 600.